We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the East Peoria City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mingus.
Here.
Sutherland. Mayor call.
Here.
All present, Mr. Commissioner Sutherland, your honor.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation or remain standing for the pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and every day you give us. Thank you for shaping our path and granting us strength to live your truth. We ask you that you continue guiding us in our decisions we make in the best interest of the city. We can always use your counsel and wisdom. Please offer strength, courage, and your peace to all in need. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move at the minute to the regular meeting held on January 16th, 2024, be approved as printed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have nothing under communication, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on an agenda item, please step forward. Ma'am? Just ask that you keep your comments to five minutes.
Yes, I am going to try. My name is Leslie Baugh, co-owner of 409 Newman Drive, which faces 219 Newman Lane and its proposed pole barn, ordinance number 4777, to which I'm strongly opposed. I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. And since there are many non-compliance issues, I'm going to speak quickly, but it may take a little longer than five minutes, but I'm going to try to talk really fast. I've distributed materials to all of you in the blue folders. First page in your packet are photos taken from the front inside of our home, which I emailed to you on January 31st. You can see that our home directly faces 219 Newman Lane, the red-sided home. You can see the black soil erosion fence just to the left of the home where the petitioner already dumped dirt intending to build his proposed barn without city approval. You can see that the front of this barn facade would be the primary view from the front of our home. As a real estate broker for 14 years, licensed in Illinois and Texas, I strongly believe that the view of a farm-like pole barn with commercial-looking, oversized metal garage door and a second gravel driveway with a dirt floor could significantly reduce our property value. Just because ours is really the only neighboring property that would be directly impacted by this barn because of the size, location, and nature of our property does not mean that you don't need to protect us and our interests also. As a city council, it's your responsibility to work in the best interest of all citizens, not just one who's a police sergeant and who's a colleague of yours on the park district board. For the city council to not take us into account when this barn would have five or more city code violations that I'm going to outline here for you that would likely negatively affect our property value would be horrendously unfair and harmful to us. Would you want to have a non-conforming barn from the front of your residential home or have your property reduced by such a barn? Also, do you really want to set a precedent that any residentially zoned property can construct a pole barn for neighbors to view? It's really common sense that the city council should not approve this barn for multiple reasons. We have spent 14 years of very hard work to improve our property that was in bad shape when we bought it. Our retirement money is all in on this property. We did not work so hard on our property to have you potentially significantly devalue it by allowing our neighbor to build this pole barn with five or more code violations, as well as these and other neighbors continuing to violate other codes, ordinances, and laws that further devalue our property. Here in your packet, here are the five codes that I myself found so far that this barn would violate. There's a document in your packet. One, code 563, total square footage of all accessory buildings should not exceed 1250 square feet. Code two, code 565E, no accessory building having a metal exterior may be constructed or located in any residential district. Three, code 565F, accessory buildings shall be architecturally consistent with the principal structure. The facade of a pole barn with an oversized, commercial-looking metal garage door is not architecturally consistent with the principal structure. Four, code 565F, all accessory buildings shall be constructed of substantially the same materials as the principal structure, or as the city's own brochure says, "The construction of an accessory structure must be consistent with the construction of the primary structure." The construction of this pole barn would be very different from that of the primary structure. It appears intended to have no traditional concrete in-ground foundation, but instead an unsightly dirt floor. It would not be traditionally framed, but just have poles with attaching supports or panels. Fifth code violation, code 7218-5, all residential driveways must be continuously paved without any portions of unpaved areas from the street along the driveway and to the parking area. This petitioner already has one non-paved gravel driveway against code, as does 229 Newman, and now you would consider approving against code a second non-paved gravel driveway for this petitioner? Note that I had to find these codes myself, since Mr. Livingston never gave us a complete list of code violations despite us asking multiple times, since we didn't really have time to dig into those ourselves because we had many of our own problems, including the recent tragic death of our 25-year-old son by a wrong-way driver. Mr. Livingston, likewise, in the January zoning board meeting, one, only told the board about one of these five violations, that of the exterior being metal. Two, did not tell the zoning board members that this was a pole barn that is not consistent at all with the construction of the primary home. Three, never told the zoning board which facade side of the structure was intended to face the street in the front of our home. Based on this one sheet that we believe was the only elevations that were given to the zoning board, they incorrectly assumed that another elevation besides the oversized garage door side was intended to face the street in the front of our home, which is why the zoning board only approved the structure with the variance that the front of the structure besided to match the home, so quote, "The neighbors don't have to look at it," a metal facade, saying the code is for the design to be consistent with the house. After that meeting, I spoke with two zoning board members. Mr. Livingston instructed a third, the board chair, to not talk with me, a nearby resident homeowner. Those board members said they had been misled and would likely not have approved the structure if they'd been given full, accurate information. Additionally, in Mr. Livingston's petition document that he prepared for your approval today is rife with errors and omissions that would need to be corrected for accuracy and full disclosure for the record before this document could be signed, as it sets precedence for city homeowners. I've given you a marked-up version for your reference without describing all of these due to time. The document would need to call it a pole barn, not a garage or shed. It would need to mention that the zoning board did not have all the information needed to make an appropriate decision. It would need to mention the three or more additional codes that this structure would violate, not just the two mentioned, and including a second gravel driveway. In closing, it is unfathomable to me that the city council members would even consider approving the pole barn and a second gravel driveway that violates five or more codes and would likely harm another homeowner, especially considering the petitioner, who's a police sergeant sworn to uphold the law, as well as other neighbors. Sorry, I'm thirsty. I have a history of multiple code violations, ordinances, and laws, including illegally raising chickens and roosters.
Ma'am, please, please.
Okay. Lots of other violations as well.
We got your point.
I urge the council to deny this non-conforming pole barn with a second gravel driveway in a residential neighborhood that violates five or more city codes and would likely harm our property value.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please step forward. Yes, sir?
Good evening, council members. My name is Nick Rochford. I'm one of the attorneys for Serenity Valley Healthcare. I'm either one of the agenda items today. I just want to introduce myself, and if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Serenity is a nursing home facility here in East Peoria and employs about 60 people here in the area. It also has about 60 residents. The loan they are applying for is for $250,000, and this loan would allow them to convert some of their rooms into memory care rooms, which is the most popular room that they have and is always at capacity. And this would allow them to serve more residents in their facility, as well as employ five to eight additional employees.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please step forward. Yes, sir?
My name is Jack Baugh. I'm co-owner of 409 Newman Drive, which faces a petitioner's property at 219 Newman Lane. I'm also speaking on my own behalf tonight. I am also, I'll give you a summary. I am also very strongly opposed to Seth's proposed very non-conforming pole barn. In summary, I'm opposed to it because, like my wife said, it appears to violate at least five building codes. I know of nowhere else in East Peoria where non-conforming pole barns that violate so many building codes and have dirt versus concrete floors, no concrete foundation exist. City codes already exist stating accessory, city codes already exist stating accessory buildings should use similar construction materials used in the main home. However, aside from this pole barn's siding having thin veneers, which on the surface looks somewhat similar to the siding on the petitioner's main home, this pole barn's construction appears to be radically different. As I understand it, unlike garages, this pole barn would appear to lack a traditional concrete foundation, have a dirt versus concrete floor, and lack traditional wood framing, and only use support poles and panels for support. According to Councilman Sutherland's testimony at the previous city council meeting, this pole barn's dirt floor, lack of a concrete foundation, use of support poles instead of traditional framing also make it vulnerable to falling down if the main support pole or supporting panels fail. Understandably, I don't want any structure to be anywhere near our home that has an increased risk of falling down. In addition, Seth and his wife already have a history of violating East Peoria city laws and ordinances and disrespecting our property, which I feel would only worsen if the city allowed his non-conforming pole barn. For example, Seth's wife already moved our traffic cones with no trespassing signs posted on them to help a guest to their home illegally drive around the road in sign on Newman Lane that bisects our Newman Lane driveway. Seth also routinely ignores the road in sign on Newman Lane by driving his motorcycle and non-licensed electric golf cart through the road inside of Newman Lane and onto the paved Newman Drive, completely disrespecting the city of East Peoria laws. This also encourages others to illegally drive their dirt bikes, ATVs, and doom buggies even through the road in sign on Newman Lane and onto Newman Drive towards the farm park. Seth also appears to have helped his neighbor build a chicken coop and placed chickens into it, even though East Peoria city code specifically prohibits chickens. On several occasions, it appears that Seth may have also participated with his Peoria police officer neighbor in unlawfully shooting guns like target practice within East Peoria city limits behind their homes. In closing, I simply want Seth and his neighbor, who are sworn police officers, to be respectful, law, and ordinance-abiding neighbors that set good examples, not bad examples for others and maintains our property values. If there was any time left, then I want to pass it to my wife for rebutting. Thank you.
This isn't a, this isn't a trial. So, if you're finished with your comments, she had her five minutes, and we're going to be respectful of everybody in the room.
I understand. If there's time remaining, if they should testify something that deserves to be rebutted.
I don't think anyone's testifying. This isn't a court of law. But thank you. All right. Thanks. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Seth from 219 Newman. Just to clarify some things, it's not going to have a dirt floor. It will have concrete. I don't know where they're getting that at. I don't own chickens. I've never raised chickens. I don't have a chicken coop. I don't know where they're getting that at. I don't own a motorcycle. I don't ride a motorcycle. I don't know where they're getting that at. I've never once fired my weapon at my house. I don't know where they're getting that either. That's totally unfounded, zero evidence. And I'm kind of getting tired of the slander that they keep spouting off. And to clarify, my golf cart is not electric. It's gas.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please step forward. No, sir, we're, listen. We've heard your scorecard. I'm just, I'm done entertaining this. This is a public meeting. I told both of you guys, you've reached out to every elected official multiple times. You've presented your objections. You've stated your objections publicly and individually through electronic transmission. We've heard you loud and clear. And I told you in my response to you, we're not here to discuss a scorecard that you keep on your neighbors. We're here to discuss the special use that's before the council. So I think we've heard enough about how you feel about your neighbors. So, anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please step forward. I'm seeing none. Commissioner Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consistent of items numbered one through nine. Item number one, adoption of resolution number 2324-130, resolution to approve payment of the scheduled bills listed on schedule number 17 in the amount of $2,310,742.10. Item number two, adoption of ordinance number 4766 on a second reading and ordinance amending the city of East Peoria zoning code to adjust hours of operation for cannabis dispenser areas in the city of East Peoria. Item number three, adoption of ordinance number 4775 on second reading and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property located at 435 Taylor Street and adjacent parcels located at 429, 433, and 437 East Washington Street in the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois. Item number four, adoption of resolution number 2324-114 on second reading, resolution approving an engagement agreement between the city of East Peoria and Robert W. Baird and Company for the bond underwriter services. Item number five, adoption of resolution number 2324-118 on second reading, resolution of adoption of the updated tri-county multi-jurisdictional natural hazards mitigation plan. Item number six, adoption of resolution number 2324-117 on second reading, resolution approving the purchase of a 2023 Ford F-150 with a lift gate fit out from Morrow Brothers Ford, Inc. for facilities management. Item number seven, adoption of resolution number 2324-120 on second reading, resolution approving revised use policy for civic plaza meeting rooms and shared spaces. Item number eight, adoption of resolution number 2324-115 on second reading, resolution approving the purchase of a used 2016 Skid Steel loader from Tazewell County Asphalt, Inc. for the street department. Item number nine, adoption of resolution number 2324-119 on second reading, resolution authorizing directing the payment of an invoice in the amount of $40,000 to the public, Final Lake Public Park District for the use of park property and security detail at the Winter Wonderland lighted display from November 23 to January 1, 2024, as listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker? Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
All present, your honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that the items numbered one through nine on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted, and the items numbered two through nine, having been read once by the title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingus, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, a handful of items tonight. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4776, as amended, here to attach an ordinance authorizing a special use for the property located at 51 Hoffer Lane to continue and modify the non-conforming uses of the property located in the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, having been read once by its title and have laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
Yeah, one of the key words that you may have noticed, again, this is the second reading. I was the one that opposed in the previous meeting, and the reason and the grounds for which I opposed, again, the, the ask in this particular case was hard surface paving to the property, not just, not just the parking spaces. And it was amended by, I believe, Commissioner Sutherland and approved by the board. So what we have here, again, the 51 Hoffer Lane is a building that's, it's, you know, if you say at the end of, right there, you come up Fay Hollow and Pine Crest where they meet, and there's Hoffer Lane right out in front of River City Construction. They bought the property and intend to use it for one of their operations, and that's really what it was about, that the non-conforming use was that they would be allowed to use it as intended without any changes, including the hard surface from the road to the parking lot.
So just a quick comment. I, along with Commissioner Hill, had opposed it, and we had opposed it as amended. The reason why it's not, the reason why we didn't wait an additional two weeks is that Commissioner Sutherland, who did support it as amended, made clear that he couldn't attend this, this council meeting. I see no reason, based on the majority will of the council, to have you folks wait an additional two weeks. So therefore, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve this as amended tonight, just to move it along and not make you wait any longer. So, any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
All present, your honor.
Excuse me, I was a nay. No, that was, I said aye, but got caught up in the vote. So I was a nay to that.
Three ayes and one no, your honor.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4777, as amended, here to attach an ordinance authorizing a special use for additional accessory structure on property located at 219 Newman Lane in the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, having been read once by its title and have laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingus?
Again, operative word here. I was, I think, the lone nay vote on this, but not on the grounds that necessarily, I was on the ground, not the BOFs that you heard at the beginning. Again, I've been one that has stood firmly with our ordinances. In this particular case, I did not see a reason for the amended part of this ordinance was removing the requirement that the front-facing part of the building had dissimilar information from the steel. And so, there was a motion, and this was amended to remove that. And again, I stayed with supporting our ordinances as stated. Now, the BOFs have brought up many different situations in this case, but I think it's, would be, it wouldn't serve justice if we didn't talk about the process of how this case got to the zoning board a little bit. As many people, the council has heard me repeatedly say I spent 19 years on the zoning board of appeals, and I've received a couple hundred of the packets. And what the packets are, two weeks before, before the meeting roughly, every member gets a packet of information talking about every case that is going in front of them in that particular week. In this particular case, when we look at this building, the building, the process allows for the zoning board to hear the case and to look for either unique reasons why the ordinances cannot be held or would not be upheld in this case. In this building, the issue was the metal building. There wasn't mention to the square footage, but the square footage of this building is 1,200 square feet. It's 30 by 40. So, the issue of why the square footage was even mentioned is if they have a shed, obviously that puts them over the 1,200, and I guess it's 1,250 square feet that the ordinance allows. But the zoning board takes in other factors, where it's at, you know, the zoning of the property, the size of the property, the like conditions around the property when they make their decision. So in this particular case, there have been times when accessory structures, and they're usually sheds, are allowed to remain on the property, even though a bigger accessory structure such as this, this metal building is being put up. So it's not uncommon for that to occur. So, the, you know, there was a mention of, you know, gravel driveways. Gravel driveways, there's a section in the code that allows gravel driveways when a large percentage of the properties in the surrounding area, because we have, as a norm, a hard surface requirement for driveways or, well, driveways leading to buildings. In this particular case, you go all up and down, and the mayor knows better than I do, this is not even a city road, and there's driveways all up and down that property that are not city, that are gravel driveways. And so, that's not consistent. So the only thing that the board was asked to hear, well, even stepping back, there's a height, there was a question about the height of the building. When the plans come into the city, they are reviewed by our building inspectors. And again, if there's not an issue with the height, then that doesn't become an issue at the zoning board of appeals. Now, one of the things that, you know, the zoning, the mention of the zoning board members being misled, and I talk about the packet, you know, I went back to the packet that they received, and very common, and I'm not expecting anybody in this audience, is a petition. That's, that's common. Often, we give a GIS map of the property or the surrounding area, and here's, you know, it's a bigger blown-up one. But this is the one that's more important. Well, there's a couple of them coming up. This one, which is even harder to see from your chair, shows the property, a little fuzzy, but there's a, there's a square box on there that, if you look at that, and again, if you've ever looked at any drawings that, that look from top, bottom, side, you can tell from this drawing, when you look at the other picture in this, in this, and there was, yeah, you had another map, but this map of the shed, you can from this, in my opinion, determine which building or which side of the shed or the building is facing the street. And that's my opinion, and I'll share this with the commissioners if they, if they want to see it. But with that being said, the ordinance that requires dissimilar, there was a information that said they would not have ruled that way if they knew the building had the door facing the street. So, again, I go back to the little diagram that indicates the building, and it has a white box on there that says, you know, that it's going to be paved, you know, new gravel drive lane on the front that goes into the front of this building. My point being, the ordinance does not differentiate that it has to be a side of a building without a door that is the dissimilar information, you know, dissimilar, I keep saying information, dissimilar materials. It says the front. So in this particular case, I think the zoning board got it right when they required the property owner to put dissimilar information. I think the property owner stated in the first meeting that, or maybe it was the zoning board, that due to cost, he was asking for a variation. While the zoning board did not grant that, but it was granted here at the city council. So my point and reason is bringing this up is the zoning board of appeals is a board of seven people. They get this information. They're encouraged, if not, not required, to make a site visit to see the surrounding area and the topography. They had information without Ty Livingston telling them what was the front of the building because it wasn't relevant to the case. You know, requiring this different material on the front was all that was the part of the case. And so, it goes a little bit back to the mayor's point at the beginning. All those others were deemed not relevant, and therefore, the zoning board was asked to rule on the dissimilar, dissimilar materials, and then that was overridden here at the city council. I will, again, not support this, not based on the BOFs' intentions of the other violations, but being with consistent with the code requiring the difference of the use of the face. And I, hand that over to anybody else.
Yeah. Comments, discussion?
Sure, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
First of all, I respect my colleague. He spent a long time on the ZBA, and it's very difficult doing so, and then coming to the city council, and we are potentially looking at things that would go against the decisions that they make. But I think it was Commissioner Sutherland a while ago, six months, a year ago, made a statement that the amount of legislating it would take to make sure we covered all things and all situations, it would be impossible. So ultimately, it comes to us to make decisions like this that in unique circumstances, or some circumstances aren't necessarily unique, but it's just the neighborhood's a little different. So that's, that's why it comes to us. First of all, I did want to say something about the comment that was made about the pole barn falling down. It was Mr. Sutherland that made that comment, and he didn't say the pole barn would fall down. He, he referred to that it had been engineered in such a way that if we then required them to put a different facade on the outside, he questioned the engineering of that. He questioned, you know, should we be able to just, to tell them that they have to put a different facade or a different, I don't know, whatever siding or whatever it was on the outside. The, I am happy to hear it's a concrete floor. I didn't think- am happy to hear it's a concrete floor. I didn't think about that last time, but I am happy to hear that. But you know, a couple of things that were said. This is not a city road. We sat in a town hall meeting here a number of years ago, and it was referring to pavement of that road. And there were some that asked that the city pave it, but then when we talked about it and about how it got to that point, the original developer, however it happened, made the lane the way that it was, and it was rock, and the residents all understood that. And then they accepted that, and they, we did provide some assistance, I think some grading, if I'm not mistaken. We're always willing to try to do what we can, because we do appreciate the neighborhood, and there are a lot of, you know, good people live there that come into the city of East Peoria, and some of them do live in cities, in houses that are on lots that are in the corporate city limits. Right next door, you can have a house that, for instance, the chicken debate. One house can be allowed chickens. Next door, not allowed chickens, based on whether you are in the corporate city limits or not. I could see how that is unfair. And that's kind of that legislative thing, you know, that it's one of those areas that's a little bit unique and a little bit different. This is not a city road. I know that the issue of signs have been brought up. The city, a while ago, when it was realized that this is not a city road, this is a private drive, we no longer control the signage on that road. Even the barricade, it's there, it was placed a long time ago by the city, and I'm not suggesting removing that. I think that would be damaging to the neighborhood. But that's something that was placed there a long time, and we, that's not, I guess we take no ownership in that. And in maintaining it, we're not enforcing anybody's signs because it is not a city road. We, I did take a little bit of offense to the often reference to police sergeant. The mention of the park district board colleague, I don't know if that was meant because we were in some, what, cahoots, but I didn't like that. But what really bothered me was the email we received last week, when it referenced one of our members that's in here tonight, that he was somehow doing something wrong. I just think that was totally inappropriate. The, what it comes down to is, we have to make a decision. And fact is, this, they've come to us, asking us if we would consider it. And, you know, I don't know, I look at the picture here, and just for instance, like the fence that's around your yard. I'm sure when you did that, I don't know if that's in code, outside of code, I have no idea. But if you want to do something that is a little bit outside of code, you need to come, if it's possible, to ask for a variance. And that's what they're doing here. I look at the house next door, and they have a large building. I believe this fits the neighborhood well. I'm gonna vote yes.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, just to go off of Commissioner Decker's points. The only reason that I would know that he's a police sergeant, or other than knowing the name on the park board, is because you guys told me. His job as a police sergeant has nothing to do with my decision. His position on the park board has nothing to do with my decision. If you've paid attention to this council at all in the past six years, there are a handful of us, we are all, five of us, very consistent in how we vote on zoning issues for the most part. And my vote yes on this has nothing to do with his position within the community. I think he has the right to build his structure, and he can put the door wherever he wants it, in my opinion. I also think if I look at the pictures, his house, I believe he said, or you guys said, that he built this house. Is that correct? It's a really nice-looking house. It looks like he keeps his property nice. Those are your pictures, not his. So I take a little bit of offense of the implication that we're giving him something based on his position in the community, because that has nothing to do with it whatsoever. I'm a yes vote on this. And I really don't appreciate the way you guys have approached council when it comes to getting us to change our mind, to be honest. And that's just my opinion.
Very good. Well, I'm not gonna dump on anyone. I made myself clear last time. I think the term that was coined in that meeting was "unique." And Commissioner Decker and Commissioner Hill spoke to the uniqueness of that entire area, which is a blend of county and city corporate. The way there's, those properties are zoned now is conservation. So to me, when I looked at it the last time, taking all the scorecard items out, taking the personal, it's clear that there's a history there between neighbors. Listen, our decision is based on facts that are presented to us. Commissioner Hill walked everybody in this room through what a special use process is with the zoning board of appeals. At the end of the day, and I said as much in my response to some of your emails, is that this council absolutely has the authority to make its own determination. The ZBA brings forward a recommendation. The council has the authority to make its own decision, as, you know, they did last time, which was amending it as it was presented to us, and approving it as amended. Not gonna go down the road of getting personal here. At the end of the day, I think it's a perfect fit. I know you're gonna walk away from here upset, and listen, that's why you have to have broad shoulders in this job. You're not gonna please everybody in this community. And we're presented, what we're presented, we try to make fair and objective determinations, and that's what I feel strongly that we're doing here, despite what you might think walking away from here. I'm not gonna make it personal. I support it. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago this evening, and I'm gonna support it again this evening. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
No.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
I have three ayes.
Thank you.
And one no, Your Honor.
Motion carries.
Okay. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2324-127, here to attach a resolution approving economic development loan to Serenity Valley Healthcare LLC from the city of East Peoria Revolving Loan Fund, be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2324-127 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
Well, this is the, I think this is the first one that I have participated in. But knowing that existed, again, what we have on the table here, Serenity Valley Healthcare, Serenity up there at the base of McClugge Bridge, has been an asset, and it's been in business here in East Peoria for five years. And they've been a good, you know, good business. They've provided a good service, and they have recognized the additional need for, or additional demand for memory care. And so the ask here is that, well, we, I guess backing up, we did give them a prior loan in 2017 out of this revolving loan fund, and they paid it back in full. So the ask this time is $250,000, term of five years and five percent. And so we do this out of that revolving loan fund to, again, further our economic development and support those businesses that we think, you know, are a good thing, a good fit for our community. So that's what's on the table here tonight. The, as we've done the due diligence, I have not, but the due diligence has been done on this lender, or this borrower. And as we always do, we ask for personal guarantees from the partners to complete this whole cycle. So I definitely support this, and look forward to them continuing to offer some additional services here in our community.
Very good. Any discussion?
I'll tell you, Mayor, the more I see, it's certainly a much-needed element of healthcare. It seems to be growing and growing.
Very good. Any other discussion? The only point I'd like to bring up, I'm gonna support this this evening, but in staff this morning, the fire chief brought up a question about, or addressed? Okay. I don't need to speak about it anymore. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
While present, putting your hand up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2324-128, here to attach a resolution approving economic development loan to Reverence Coffee LLC from city of East Peoria's revolving loan fund, be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2324-128 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingus?
This is the same thing, but on a smaller scale, and I don't know if our, yeah, okay. Chris and Kelsey are opening Reverence Coffee, and it's right behind us, a few, the few remaining structures from the old, old neighborhood, but they're gonna be creating this coffee. And again, they've came to the city for the similar reason, for a much smaller ask of $30,000 with bank participation. I didn't mention on the previous one, there wasn't bank participation, but again, five years and at the rate of three percent. So again, looking forward to having somebody start something new, and bring, again, bring value to our community, and we'll have coffee out the back door. So
Excellent.
That's what we have here.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tech.
Commissioner, if I could just jump in. In its purest form, this is really what the revolving loan fund is all about. It's a small startup here. They've got an opportunity to really establish themselves. We've got some great momentum going on here in the levy district with the new apartments going up. You know, we look forward to them getting established. But this is really what that loan is about. It's kind of that gap financing piece. So this is really exciting to see, to have two of these on the agenda, but, you know, particularly this one, because it's a great startup going on, and we look forward to them bringing business to the levy district and really doing a great job here.
Yeah. Great comments, Ty. Any discussion?
Congratulations. I think you probably get the smartest people in the room award for putting it right there next to the development that's coming in. I wish you the best of luck. I'm not a coffee drinker. I'm sure you probably have hot chocolate and other things, so congratulations.
Any other discussion?
When's it gonna open?
Hopefully in April.
Okay.
Yep.
There's some missing bricks we gotta fix. We're working hard.
You guys are working hard, and we're super excited, and we're glad we can support you to, this is what it's all about. So congratulations. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
While present, putting your hand up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2324-126, here to attach a resolution approving services contract for migrating the city's geographical information system, GIS system, to an online cloud-based server system, be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2324-126 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
This one is not really glitz and glamour, but what it is, the geographical information system, I encourage anybody that wants to see a property line of theirs, they can go out to the city website, and go to the departments, and find their way to the geographical information system. They can look at their own property, look where it's, where it lies. They can click through to the Tazewell County Tax Assessor site to see information. We use it heavily, not only on our zoning side, our planning side, but we also use it on our water and sewer side, and street side. So what this is, is we had a little bit of a dated system. It was actually getting to the point of no support. We upgraded the system a few months back. We upgraded to a later supportable version, and now this move is to take it from our server based here in City Hall, and move it to a cloud-based, and leverage our enterprise licensing that we already have in place, and that we're actually making use of a service that someone already paying for. Plus, the server that we have in-house here was, is, is getting close to the end of life, and would need to be upgraded, and that would be a significant amount of money to buy a server grade. So this is the move. It, the cost is $24,600 to have our GIS consultant from TWM help us move that over, and that's what this is about.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
While present, putting your hand up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2324-129, here to attach a resolution abating and eliminating various 2023 tax levies for water and sewer bond issues, tax increment financing bonding, bond issues, and development bond issues be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2324-129 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingus?
This is an annual thing. It's a normal order of business, that when we have, we issue bonds, we have to guarantee those with the tax levy. And we, we have every intent with alternate revenue source, of funding these with alternate revenue sources, but we have to secure them with the tax levy. So once we have affirmed that we have the money and alternate revenue sources, then we come back and we abate those bonds or those costs from our tax levy. And I'm gonna look to Scott to see if he would like to add anything that I may have left off.
I don't have anything to add. I mean, you nailed it, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
While present, putting your hand up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4778, here to attach an ordinance partially abating the 2023 tax levy and the amount of the recapture revenue from the adjustments for certificates of error, certain court orders, or final administrative decisions of the property tax appeal board, be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
I may go to Scott earlier on this one, but this one has to do with us abating. The Illinois municipal code allows us through, under the PTEL law, that we can, well, we're automatically, I think that's the key word, we're automatically giving a levy to recapture costs that are tax properties that we might have lost through, as I just, well, what I just, you know, errors, county errors, court orders, or final administrative. You've heard us in the past that if somebody protests their tax returns, or tax property, tax assessments, we could actually get an adjustment back. And so the automatic levy is, is by law, put on there, put on us, giving us this money. And what we've wanted to do, to, again, support our original efforts when we were setting our tax levy earlier, holding our tax amount to be the same this year as it was last year, we're gonna abate these automatically recaptured PTEL. Scott, I'm gonna look to you to...
Well, thanks, Commissioner. I don't really have a whole lot to add. You summarized it pretty well. It's not the most exciting topic, but yeah, sometimes, essentially, probably in the simplest terms, is that all the taxes that get levied don't get collected because they're being challenged either in court or through the property tax assessment appeals process. And this, like, this is a fairly new law, and so this is a fairly new process we have to do now annually, is abate that, recapture. But otherwise, as you point out, Commissioner, it's automatically imposed by law. But the city does have the ability to abate that, which means essentially not charge the citizens for that additional cost, and that's what's happening here.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
While present, putting your hand up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that completes it for me for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, for all the hot-button topics. All right, Commissioner Decker?
I have one item, Mayor. Resolution number 2324-125, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois. The resolution number 2324-125, here to attach a resolution accepting the lowest responsible bid from Kirby Risk Electric Supply for the purchase of fixtures and mounting arms for the Blackjack Boulevard Winners Way Street lighting upgrade project be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2324-125 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingus?
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. I knew that it had been a while, and I didn't realize it had been since 1997, since we, since those were placed. We have great businesses in East Peoria, and they're all valuable. Paradise is one of those. That if you look at the revenue that has come to the city of East Peoria because of the Paradise, it's enormous, especially since 1997. They, we
They, we try to, we try to support all of our businesses, but as many people as drive in there, obviously, we're going to recognize that when it's not the way that it should be, pavement's bad or whatever. Just as we try to do with all, we're going to try to keep this up the best we can. Appreciate Robert Cole and his efforts. So many times over the years, he has worked with electric aggregation and saved millions, literally millions of dollars for the city in cost savings because of decisions that have been made. And he's done a lot of work to go out and find them. This is one of those. It's, the lowest bid is Kirby Risk Electric Supply. And I believe, unless I misunderstood it, we are getting a rebate of $8,922.25, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. For a second, I thought that that was what we were paying, but I believe that is our rebate. Ty, is that absolutely...
That sounds correct. The lighting is dramatically improved. I think that, you know, what you have is these glass globes that light up the sky, which sounds nice, but doesn't really do anything for the driving surface. These are going to be downfiring, better intensity. I mean, it's just, he's done a great job researching better light fixtures that would be a great enhancement to that entrance to coming into the casino area and hotel.
I appreciate his efforts. And man, he could, he could make a side business finding these incentives for different communities. Does a great job.
Not incentives for Ameren, just for the record.
Yes, yes, it is. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion?
Just one comment, because Commissioner Decker and I were talking right before this meeting, that this, as he already mentioned, aggregation or electrical aggregation money, and Robert Cole's been behind that. But we've used it for many years, and the whole purpose of that money is in that electrical aggregation is for energy efficiency improvements. And we've used them many times to change out furnaces throughout the East Peoria facilities and done other lighting things. And I believe we might have even paid for some lighting changes down on the riverfront with electrical aggregation. So the one thing, you know, we don't, we get the Ameren rebate. It was $8,922.25. But, so the cost of $43,000 and some change, what it doesn't even capture is the energy savings. Again, with these old lights that, as Commissioner Decker said, 1997, these are going to be much more efficient and safety-wise. It was an accident pedestrian car, not because of the lighting down there a year or two ago down at the...
Sure, it was because of the driver.
It was. So I want to point that out. But these lights will be even, you know, as pointed out, down-facing, as Ty mentioned. So good thing, good use of the money and...
Yeah, because of return on investment when we do projects like this, I think this one was like three, 3.4 years or something crazy like that. I mean, that's, that's why we're going to continue to do what we're doing, going in that direction. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Mingus?
Got four items tonight, Your Honor. First item, Resolution Number 2324-122 be resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that Resolution Number 2324-122 hereto attach Resolution approving the purchase of a new ambulance from Arrow Manufacturing, Inc., for the fire department be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution Number 2324-122 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. This is exactly as it says. It's a purchase of new ambulance. Half of the funds, and I've got the chief back there if I mess this up, but half of, it's going to be paid for out of half of this fiscal year's capital, and then the second half will be out of next fiscal year's capital. The cost will not exceed $347,415. It'll be a Dodge ambulance, which is, I believe, what our last one was purchased. Looks very similar to what that's going to be. Chief is nodding his head.
Yep. This was part of our capital plan. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting high your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item tonight, Your Honor, 2324-123 be resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that Resolution Number 2324-123 hereto attach a Resolution approving the purchase of a Lucas mechanical chest compression device from Stryker Medical for the fire department be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution Number 2324-123 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. So this is my first item. My last item will also mention the opening of our new fire station, which will be later this month. One of the things that the chief came to us to purchase for that fire station is another Lucas device, which is a device that the fire department can put on a patient, able to do chest compressions. I believe with them laying down, with them standing up, wherever they move them, as long as I can get them on them, it will give chest compressions, and they save lives. With the opening of the fourth station, the chief felt, and I support purchasing another one of these, so we'll have one at each fire station so that when we're responding, we will have the availability to have one of these throughout the city.
Very good.
The cost is 20,000, $20,751.08.
Very good. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything, but I feel it important. There are a handful of inventions that have come up throughout my career that, that just kind of changed things. This is one of them. Because when you get there, you're doing manual CPRs, either you've done or you've seen. But when you're able to put this device on, it's perfect. It never slows down, doesn't get tired. And if the elevator is too small, as the commissioner said, you can actually stand the person up, and it's still continuing to do it. There's no stopping to reposition. So I assure everyone, this is money well spent.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting high your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Third item tonight, Your Honor, Ordinance Number 4779. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Ordinance Number 4779 hereto attach an ordinance approving an update to the 2014 Emergency Operations Plan for the City of East Peoria Emergency Management Agency be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. And Your Honor, I will turn this one over to you.
Yeah, so FEMA and I EMA recommend that every five years municipalities update their emergency operations plan. And I was invited to a conference to help welcome the group without really understanding what the conference was at the Embassy Suites last August, I believe it was August. And it was real eye-opener, as I'm standing up there welcoming people and encouraging them to participate in what the conference was. I realized that I'm kind of a hypocrite, because it made me go back and take a look at our emergency operation plan. I realized that we had not updated ours in many years. We've got new chiefs, we've got new department heads, we've had a lot of changes. And so we charged Chief Zimmerman with taking a look at our plan, updating it, coming back with recommendations to update it. And then we took it a step further, because as you know, natural disasters happen to occur. You don't know when, where, or who's going to be struck. So if you're not ready, then that could be a problem for your community as far as saving lives and property. So we took a look at that plan, and then we reached out to Dawn Cook. She's the Director of Tazewell County EMA. And we asked if her and her staff would be willing to facilitate a tabletop exercise, which we did in mid-December. And I will tell you, we were all super impressed by it. And, you know, part of that is taking what our plan is going to look like, which has to be adopted by the council, and actually applying that in this tabletop exercise. So it was very beneficial for everybody involved in the exercise. Dawn gave us a lot of positive feedback and some pointers. We appreciate their efforts there. But we assured her that we're going to continue to have these tabletop exercises every year on an annual basis. And I will tell you, you don't, the only person I think that knew what it was going to be about was the chief by design. You know, they show up and say, here are the circumstances, what are you going to do? So it's a, it's a great thing, but what's before us this evening is where we landed on our updated plan, which needs approval by the council. So any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting high your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Final item tonight, Your Honor, Resolution Number 2324-124. It's a little bit of reading, but so just to prepare the other commissioners, Resolution authorizing a temporary increase in the number of assistant fire chiefs, an increase in the number of lieutenants, and a decrease in the number of deputy chiefs in the East Peoria, East Peoria Fire Department. Whereas Title I, Chapter 5, Section 2.1 of the East Peoria City Code authorizes the City Council to determine from time to time by resolution the number of individuals to hold each rank of the East Peoria Fire Department. And whereas pursuant to Resolution Number 223-049 approved in August 2022, the number of firefighters in the fire department was indefinitely increased to 33. And whereas the deputy fire chief, Ryan Beck, has submitted his intent to retire effective after August 30th, 2024, and will use benefit time to reach that date. And whereas assistant fire chief Kim Riegenbach has submitted his intent to retire effective after June 10th, 2024, and will use benefit time to reach that date after February 10th, 2024. Whereas the deputy chief position will not be filled, and in order to ensure a smooth transition at the time of retirement of the assistant fire chief position in the fire department command staff, and to allow the appointment of successor to the assistant fire chief position, it is in the best interest of the city to temporarily increase the number of assistant fire chiefs by one until after June 10th, 2024. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city to appoint a firefighter to the assistant fire chief position at this time to fill the vacancy created by this retirement. And whereas, with the opening of fire station number two on Centennial Drive by Illinois Central College, an additional three lieutenant positions are needed, and it is the best interest of the city to appoint these additional three lieutenant positions to ensure proper staffing at fire station two when fire station, when the fire station commences operations during the month of February 2024. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, effective February 11th, 2024, the fire department of the City of East Peoria shall consist of the following personnel: one fire chief, one deputy fire chief, four assistant fire chiefs, 12 lieutenants, 33 firefighters. Section 2, the fire chief is hereby authorized and directed to notify the police and fire commission of these changes and to request a fleet and fire commission to undertake the process of appointing a new probationary firefighter to fill the open positions hereby created. Section 3, effective June 11th, 2024, the fire department of the City of East Peoria shall consist of the following personnel: one fire chief, one deputy fire chief, three assistant fire chiefs, 12 lieutenants, 33 firefighters. Section 4, effective August 31st, 2024, the fire department of the City of East Peoria shall consist of the following personnel: one fire chief, three assistant fire chiefs, 12 lieutenants, 33 firefighters. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Resolution Number 2324-124 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. So there's a few things going on in this resolution. I'll try to explain them one at a time. So we have our deputy fire chief. He has submitted his intent to retire. He is using benefit time, so is no longer working. We have an assistant fire chief who has done the same thing. It looks like his last day is going to be February 10th, 2024, last day that he works, but he's using benefit time as well. We have fire station two opening here in a few, in a couple of weeks that, in order to properly staff that, we have to have additional lieutenants, because now we'll have four fire stations that are operating and you need a lieutenant at each fire station. So all of those things are causing us to make adjustments to our ordinance as far as who, how many people we are employing. And so that's what this is laying out, is while we still have the deputy chief and chief Riegenbach on the books, we'll have additional, the deputy chief position will still be there, but he will not be working. We'll have four assistant fire chiefs, because we'll still have chief Riegenbach on the books, but we're going to promote somebody to take that position. And then we have the three additional lieutenant positions that are created by station two opening.
Well, thank you. Explained it somewhat. I'm sure everyone's still confused, but...
And we lose all those positions through attrition, is basically. As people walk, as people come off the books, their positions come off the books. Correct.
Very good. Any discussion? Just one quick point. I know we did the State of the City address Friday, and I made mention that we've heard from citizens, they can't comprehend, they see that the fire station is completely constructed, and they're upset to know that there's not anything happening out of there. A couple of things just to point out, so the council's aware, in case you haven't been up there. There are some punch list items that we're working through, hence the little delay in the opening of that. So we also had to have the radio system installed in there, so there is a delay. No fault of the city of getting the radios installed in there. So, you know, just be patient. That thing will be operational here in a couple of weeks, and we'll keep everybody posted. But part of it was redoing part of the floor in there that was no fault of the city's, but it had to be redone, and there was a cure time on that. So didn't make a lot of sense to move in there and then have to move everything around to clean up the punch list items. So just thought I'd point that out.
Mayor, I think it could be said that as soon as that can be staffed, the city is eager to do so.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's a beautiful facility. Can't wait to show it off, so. Anyway, discussion, or any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting high your honor.
Thank you. Motion carries.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Public comment. Looks like the public has left the building. Comments from the council. Commissioner Decker?
The, I just, on the side, the fire station's a long time coming. The, uh, I just, on the side, that fire station's a long time coming, thirty, forty years it's been talked about and, uh, identified as needed, and actually, there's a structure fire last week, right, Bobby? I think, um, that was within a half mile of that structure. Um, so I think everybody is eager to get that, uh, staffed. It'll be an awesome, um, addition to our community, and make it even safer. And finally, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, that's the adjournment. I'll save that for a couple of minutes. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hill?
Well, can't believe it's about that time of year again.
You're gonna stay at the farmer's market.
It is, it's getting close, because I've already had entertainers contacting me and people wanting to sign up, so I've gotta update the forums, and if there's a volunteer out there that would like to run our farmer's market, boy, I've got a volunteer job for you, so, you know, it, it's great. We're looking for some new blood to run this place, uh, run, run the, the farmer's markets every Friday from four to seven, and, uh, they're lucky to have you, and, but, so, just know, it's right around the corner.
When are we kicking that off, do you know?
Uh, we, well, that's one of the things that we've, uh, our schedule has, since I've been in, in charge, we've tried different dates. Uh, last year, I don't think we started until June, the first week of June. Uh, the year before, we started the last two weeks of May, so we haven't, I haven't got it with Ty and Jill to say, so it's gonna be end of May, beginning of June.
As he gets a volunteer, he'll let you know.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would go a lot quicker if I had a volunteer running the, running it, so, okay. That's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Mingus?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, very good, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, just a couple of quick points I'd like to bring up. I'd publicly like to apologize to the commissioners. Uh, they were not made aware that the State of the City, which was held last Friday, was gonna happen on Friday, February second. Uh, there was a, we dropped the ball on the communication thing, the reason why Commissioner Hill was present, I was in here late Thursday evening, um, adding a couple additional items to that, um, presentation for Friday morning, and he happened to stop in and wanna know what I was up to, and told him, and he was unaware that there was a State of the City, and I have since learned in talking to the, the other commissioners individually, they were not made aware. So I apologize to these guys. I don't, there were two hundred people and some change there. It was a great turnout, and I didn't want people to think that our elected officials, even though we gave them, you know, um, kudos during the State of the City, because, and sincerely, uh, appreciate this council for all its hard work and kinda how we roll up our sleeves and get things done without personal agendas. Uh, but I publicly wanted to apologize to these gentlemen, and I can assure you that won't happen again. Uh, I'll take, uh, responsibility for that. Um, just real quickly, one of the things that we shared Friday, uh, for those that follow the city on social media, we pushed out, this coming year will be the fortieth anniversary of the Festival of Lights, and Corey Brown had pushed out a survey, we wanna hear from you.